Members present, naps it please.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
And Dermot is absent.
Open meeting compliance statement, read please.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following: 3.1, items for new business; 3.2, minutes; 3.3, approval of finance report; 3.4, purchase order encumbrances for FY '26; 3.5, approval of extra duty; 3.6, approval of activity fund; 3.7, approval of booster club sanctioning requests; 3.8, approval of board policy procedures; and 3.9, declare the following items as surplus. We'll go back to 3.1, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
I don't have any business.
Okay. Minutes is next, 3.2. Any updates, questions about the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll move to 3.3, approval of the finance report.
Let's start with the balance sheet. Don't know where we ended the year, started the year. Have to start the year off, money on hand in July. General fund had $1,142,636. Building fund had $1,703,782. Child nutrition, we were at $156,898. Seeking fund, $12,276. Gift fund, $161,766. So total cash on hand in July was $3,177,360. In our investments, general fund had $6.1 million. Building fund is $1,887,700. Child nutrition, $109,000. Receiving fund had $1,000. Gift fund, $275,000. And total investments, $8,372,000. We have a total revenue receivable of $2,713,576. That is probably allocated money that we just haven't received yet. Remember, our estimate needs isn't necessarily allocated yet because we have approved an estimate needs, all the things. But, I should say, that never will go up when that happens in October. Total assets at $8,835,784. We do have outstanding warrants, $373,472. So there's a total fund balance, everything combined, at $8,462,311. It's kind of starting off the year. Remember, some of those numbers look big, general fund, building fund in particular, child nutrition. Some of that's going to be carryover that we use, that savings account we use to pay payroll is probably our biggest lineup. And all the things from now through December. We start getting that more money back in. Those numbers will shrink from now till then and skyrocket again. Anyway, that's kind of financially where we're at. You want to just keep rolling.
Yes, please. No, you're on a roll. Go.
General fund. Just a handful of purse orders I want to draw attention to, maybe discuss a little bit, a couple of them. PO number 120 is to KOSA for, there's some middle school teachers going to a workshop called Uplifting Classrooms. It's about, you know, Stephanie probably tell us more about it. It's all about student learning and all the things in educating kids. So we have some teachers wanting to do things and we're going to do all the things we can support them.
We'll probably have some others that are wanting to go to Uplifting Classrooms. Last year, we sent all of our new teachers, if they were like, just if they had taught for like a year or two, or brand-new teachers, to that training. K-20 Center puts it on. They do a great job. They go down, they learn, I mean, a lot about classroom management, just kind of some of the little things that we don't always think about. So they go for two days and then about a month later, then the principals go down with them and we do some more training together. So it's good. We've had all of our teachers go to that, at least last year, and then there were some off and on before.
Really teach that and quality of growing our own and supporting our teachers and all the things.
Very important.
PO number 121 is to, again, to KOSA for the Oklahoma Principal Leadership Institute. Mrs. Webster, Ms. Martini are going to that. Maybe three, four times?
Three times, yep.
Oklahoma City do all the things on being good principals. So. PO 126 to Peak Environment, $12,000 for over district spring, fall, spring, summer. It's all about spraying all the grass and keeping weeds out, all that kind of stuff. PO 127, DT Lawn Care. Yeah, we approved that through June. Now we've got to approve the, since we're on a new fiscal year. That's mowing in July, August, and September. PO number 128, Next Tech Consulting. That is to put, it's 2020, 2021, 2025. Let's put all new access points in the high school. Peak uptime is here. Part of an old project from about a year and a half ago when that project started. And updated all the Wi-Fi access points in the other four buildings. High school's the only one left. Next Tech's going to do that one. So before school starts, district-wide, new Wi-Fi.
Good.
So that's $102,000.
That's the next one. Whoa.
128?
I'm sorry. I'm looking at 167. Yeah, 128. 167 is Next Tech for the APs. 128's Next Tech, that's the annual we pay in IT services year after year. Which we didn't replace Trevor when he resigned. So that's just replacing his salary, what's doing. And then, what do I want to talk to you about? PO 168, STS Education. The computers that we have in the classrooms, our teachers' computers for the most part, five, six, seven years old. We're having a lot of problems with batteries not staying charged with, I mean, the things you have with the seven-year-old computer that's used every day. Priced them, I got three quotes on the thing. Quoted the same thing. It's the same ThinkPad is what we have. Upgraded hard drive to 512 instead of 256, just because Windows alone takes more storage space. So 16GB RAM, be Windows 11 Pro. It's all the things. $125,000. It actually probably less than that. That's a computer with a docking station. 116 computers sold that.
How many?
116.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all of our teachers, admin, and office staff.
Okay.
So, since we're not buying a bus this year, remember that. Since we're not buying a bus this year, I'd like to drill that money to buy new computers for the staff, since we've upgraded everything else. I feel like the teachers need it in the classroom.
They've got to have good tools.
That's general fund encumbrances. Building fund, always get ahead of myself and switch them. Not near as much on the building fund. All the other stuff on the general fund was the normal back-to-school subscriptions and all the things. Building fund, PO number 29 was to Alfa Electric for heating and air repairs at Lincoln, $6,000, I think. Did replace a unit.
Had to replace a unit. We had to fix, we had a pan that had rusted out. Some water was dripping down to another classroom. So several repairs.
Repairs replaced.
Very hot.
PO 31 is to dance mechanical for HVAC repairs here for high school. Servicing their units and then some repairs on the gym. Again, everything else is pretty well, normal stuff for this time of year. Child nutrition. We have three POs on child nutrition. It's not, you know, some of us are not having any. Talk about PO 10 first, and then I'll go back to 9/11s. They're kind of good. PO 10 is to tough fire and safety. They're the ones that come out and do all the inspections on the hoods in the kitchen, the fire suppression system, and all that kind of stuff. So they were here and did that. PO 9 and 10 go together. 9 is to climb mechanical. 10 is to key brokerage. We had two ovens, one at Lincoln and one here at the high school. They need to be replaced. That's replacing two ovens with the labor to install them. So about, just write out $7,000 or so for those two. Again, part of all, we need to clarify where that comes from.
3.5 is approval of extra duty scheduling assignments.
I don't have anything on extra duty this one.
3.6 is approval of the activity fund report.
There's not a lot, I mean, less than, right out of month into the new year. So kids have been here, just not much happening in the activity fund. I do want to draw attention though to one thing. There was $6,235 deposited in the Goldbug Education Coalition for school supplies. I could even thank those people tremendously for the service they provide to our school. I know they've been working real hard to bank. Couple ladies down there with social media posts and all the things. It's pretty cool that Alva can provide those supplies to our students. So I was going to draw attention to that. That's all I've got on activity fund.
3.7, approval of booster club sanctioning requests, vocal music, and Goldbug band.
Yeah, we had, we had the majority of them last month. We're going to wait on new officers for those two. They have to take work to us, so they're on there for approval.
We're pretty well caught up on those sanctionings. I mean, I think so too. I think we're pretty caught up. Okay, good, good. 3.8, approval of the board policy and procedures.
Okay. So a handful of these. Yeah, this time of year, it seems like there's a lot of policy amendments and changes just because of state law and changes and things like that, and then updating handbooks and all that stuff. The first one on the list is our student retention policy. When they changed from the Reading Sufficiency Act to the Student-
Strong Readers-
Strong Readers Act. Thank you. Too many Rs and Ss and As in those acronyms. So when the state abandoned RSA and went to the Strong Readers Act, they basically turned control of retentions and all the things, accountability, to bring back to the districts. It's a local control thing. And so when they did that, all those rules the state had went out. And the majority of that policy, student retention policy, was drafted around RSA. So the changes in this policy right now is really just taking RSA stuff out, for the most part. Still says that students have to have at least a 60 average to be promoted, everywhere we've gone. And, yeah, so they have to be 60%. I guess it says it twice in that. Of that, took out all the stuff where if you fail a third grade reading test, you have to do all the other things. So, anyway, that's student retention policy. The next policy on here is the attendance policy. This kind of goes back to the handbook. A lot of it is, just amends a lot of verbiage in policy and clarifies parts, different parts of it. Might let one of the principals explain attendance policy if he wanted to.
Oh, I'll talk. I might as well. So we did make some changes to the attendance policy. Back when, there used to be a clause, when we would run eligibility through the OSSBA? No, yes. Huh? OSSAA. They used to have an attendance policy that said if students were going to be eligible to participate in sports, they had to be in attendance 90% of the time. Well, then COVID hit. They pulled that policy out and they said, "Ooh, you just have your school board come up with a policy." And honestly, we really haven't had any, we didn't implement anything since then. So we want to go back to that. Students have got to be in school 90% of, 90% of the time. Our attendance, you know, is an issue. We've seen that on our state report cards, and so we're going back to that. Now, there's always, you know, if there are special circumstances, you know, parents can come in and show us doctor's notes and things like that, and we can, we'll have a committee that can review all of that and say, "Okay, yes, these are, you know, legitimate things that have happened." But sometimes, that may not always be the, that may not always be the case. And then that will move on to Mr. Brashears to look at the attendance.
And what we've had in the handbooks over the last several years is that you have to be in attendance 90% of the time to get credit for a class. You can, again, can appeal to the attendance committee. Here's why. I missed certain days. And you can still get credit for that class if you demonstrate that you have been in that class, or I missed that class for a valid reason, a good reason. We're changing our policy at the high school this year as part of, just kind of throw in about the handbook. It's been an attendance incentive that you don't have to take semester tests. We're changing that to where everyone takes semester tests. And so there's not really that incentive to be here anymore. We need to take semester tests to make sure that we are learning what we should be learning, and we are preparing our students for the next level. So the carrot per se of encouraging students to be in school as much as possible is in order to gain credit for that class, you should be in attendance of that class, so.
And also, I think that to maybe clarify, that the attendance, it's excused or unexcused. So that percentage, it doesn't matter if it's an excused absence, that percentage falls under any absence, so.
I try to tell parents that. The state doesn't care. They don't care if you call in and say, "Hey, I have a doctor's note. The kid's not there." And if the kid is not in their seat, then they're absent, period. So it really doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused.
When you look at our records on the State Department website, it doesn't indicate that a student is excused absence. It just says unexcused, plain and simple. There's the only designation.
Does the attendance committee, is that by building? Is that one group?
It is by building. Generally, we're talking counselors, teachers, people who are with that student and know the situation, so that, you know, it's not, someone is, not that we don't know all of our students pretty well, especially a student who might have some circumstances that they would be absent. But it is comprised of teachers and counselors and a principal if we would like to be.
Thank you.
That's just one of those things. When you look at our school report card and things, one of the areas, school report card's funny. We get graded on a lot of different areas. Some we can control, some we can't. So I've told the principals, I think, we need to focus on the things we can control. Can't control the rest of it. We focus on us. Attendance is one of those things I think we can semi-control. As a district, let's say district, I mean, not just us, parents, students, everybody, community. That's something we can control. So I think we need to have a little bit of teeth in our attendance policy. We can educate the kids if they're not here. One thing we learned through COVID is there's a place for online learning. There's a place for technology, especially in today's world. But to sell out one way or the other, you're polarizing. I think we need to be here in the middle and the blend, which means kids have to be here. So that's what a lot of those changes are doing, is trying to control the things we can control and make our district better. The next one is our drug-free schools policy. It's unfortunate in today's world, I feel like we, I don't feel like this. The principal's brought it to me and I do feel this way. It's sad we have to talk about drug-free policies and things, but here we are. They wanted to amend some of the, I mean, obviously our policy says don't have parents in school, right? Admend some of the consequences for that. And then maybe give a little bit of grace on the other side of it, too. It's not all about punishment, it's about rehabilitation and helping. So my thing for the first offense, drugs or alcohol at school or events, it's a 10-day out-of-school suspension. During this time, students are ineligible to participate in any activities or events. For a second offense, it's a 20-day out-of-school suspension. Students aren't eligible for activities for 90 days, for the day, for school days from the day of the event. Now, so that's, that's pretty harsh punishment, right? The other side of that, the grace. For the first or second offense, students can have those suspensions cut in half, okay, if they attend drug counseling and the things, and there's so many sessions and all that stuff. So sometimes it takes a minute to get into a counselor. If they can just show us proof, we can delay that suspension, let them participate, go to counseling and continue the thing. So that's what we're trying to do, is provide structure on one side and grace on the other. For the third offense, if you've gone through all those steps and you're still doing it, you're done. Okay, it's got like three structures out. So that's the amendment to that policy. Just tell you a little more bite into our drug policy. The next one is our Title I Parent Involvement Policy. Again, just some verbiage changes. State Department wanted us to put the words "and family" into the title, so it says parent and family involvement. Talks about where we publish our Title I program, the parent consent and all the things. We add the words "and/or publish" policy on the school website for parents to view. It just, it was some outdated stuff. So we used to put in the newspaper. Still going to do that, plus put it on the website. It's really kind of catching up what we're already doing in practice and what's in the policy. Law these came from Ms. Hill, our Title I director, and she was working at the State Department, too. So again, it's just little verbiage changes through these updates. And then the last one is EIA-R5. That is our mid-year promotion for the fourth grade. This is another one of those policies that came out of the Reading Sufficiency Act, that we're now Strong Readers Act. So we threw that away. Dawn thought we ought to just take this out of policy altogether. So delete EIA-R5. It was talking about promotion mid-year in the fourth grade if you, if they caught up with reading.
Questions? Clarification? Wonderful comment. We're sitting to my left. Further entertaining. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 3.9, declare the items surplus.
Have two lists. The first one, first one's to, at the high school, if you remember last year, we had the baby grand that was donated to replace our other piano. So we have the big grand piano that's, we talked about how old it was, been around a bit.
Yes. Austin McGee did a little research. He looked at the serial number and came up that it was made sometime in the mid-'50s, roughly 1955. So the building opened in 1956. It is more than likely the original piano from Alva High School. We don't know that for certain, but I am sure literally everyone in this room that went to school at Alva High School can say, "Yeah, that's the same piano." So I can tell you 40 years ago, yeah, but it is the same piano and more than likely, it is the original piano. So we have the baby grand donated. We need to surplus the grand piano so that we have storage room and all of that and can put our stage back together like it needs to be. So if you know of anyone who would like a gently, mostly gently used, very well-loved grand piano, we are surplusing that and need to move it along.
That's the first one. Second one's to Longfellow. It is all workbooks. Recruit them. Something outdated, something that shipped, way too many, all the things. It's workbooks. We see a surplus. It's going to be able to the bus barn, long-term store or throw it away or whatever we do. But that's all, that's pretty much all the orders is workbooks. So I've had those two surplus lists.
Thank you. Questions or concerns about 3.1 and 3.9 before I entertain a motion to accept? Hearing none, I would accept the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda. I have 3.1 through 3.9.
I second.
Thank you.
Singleton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Moving on to four, administrative report. We have a principal's report, superintendent's report resignations. I'll toss the ball back to your court, Mr. Brashears.
We will start with principal's reports.
Yes, sir.
Washington.
We ended the year with 235 students, and I'm expecting more than that. But currently, we only have a very small amount actually enrolled, which enrollment just opened last Monday. So just encouraging parents to go online and enroll. Super simple, but we are here to help. So if they need assistance, they can absolutely call. We had our pre-K screenings the first week of July, and that is organized by Ms. Potter, and she did a fabulous job. We got every pre-K student screened, and even if they aren't in our pre-K program and they're on our waiting list, we screened them also. So 60-plus students were screened. We had help from Mrs. Wilson, our pre-K teacher, and then Mrs. Peace, our special education teacher, and they come up over the summer to do this. So that is really beneficial information that we get for those students. And then we finished our summer school, our reading academy, in June. And I wanted to thank Ms. Carruthers and Ms. Coon. They were our summer school teachers and did a wonderful job. And then I mentioned in here that Chet, on the last day of summer school, donated snacks for our classes to enjoy. So thank you to Chet. We, district-wide, we are changing our start time and end time of the day. So you're going to probably hear that from everyone tonight. But a few changes at Washington include breakfast will now be served from 7:40 to 8:05. Our first bell is at 8:05, and our tardy bell is at 8:10, which it was at 8:20. So you'll hear that from everyone. But that will be an adjustment. So we want to make sure parents realize that we have that change. With that change, it's kind of changed our drop-off procedures in the morning. And until now, we've had, one, two, three, five drop-off points. And I think that actually started in 2020. So they were trying to disperse the students coming into the building, so it wasn't every kid through one door. So with our time change, that only gives them five minutes to enter that door because those doors opened at 8 o'clock. So we're going to move into a new phase, and we will be like Lincoln and Longfellow, and there's one door that you drop off and enter. So I think it's going to be great and much easier to manage. And again, if we open those doors at 8 and close them at 8:05, it would be a flood of kids for five minutes, which is not ideal. So we always welcome students to be walked in by their parents on the first two days because parents love to do that, especially with their babies. But starting the Monday, let's see, I can't remember what day that is, 14, 15, 16, 18. On the 18th, if you're dropping off early, you have to drop off at the Circle Drive. So anyway, that's just a little change I'm throwing out there. Our dismissal will be the same. We have multiple locations for dismissal to make that faster and smoother. But those are some changes that we will be passing out notes at meet-the-teacher night. Our teachers will be sending out information. So we will make sure we get that information to parents. I also wanted to mention that, I've brought it up probably every meeting, but Alva State Bank donated us some money to build an outdoor classroom. And so all of those items are ordered. They have been for quite some time. We're just waiting on arrival. Here are a few examples of some things that we purchased. The shade structure is actually going to be a pretty big deal. We don't have very much shade on our playground. We don't have very much shade on our playground. And there's other things besides that. But they got a little pushback on the timeline, the company, so it may not be here for the first day of school, but that's okay because we're going to enjoy it as soon as it's here. And we really wanna thank Alva State Bank again for that donation. And if, all of these items will be significantly used and well-loved, like that, like that piano at the high school can get lots of use. So, that's Washington.
Thank you.
Okay, Longfellow, currently as of this morning, we have 103 enrolled out of a projected around 165, 52 2nd grade and 51 3rd grade students so far. We had our summer reading program in the month of June as well. Our students did a book study over Mercy Watson to the Rescue. They worked on fiction text features, vocabulary, dictionary skills, fact and opinion, as well as fluency and comprehension. Ted Murray had been doing a knockout job getting our building ready for back-to-school night on Tuesday, the 12th, 4 to 7, and that is district-wide. And so, teachers been coming in and getting the rooms set up. And all of our elementary schools have the same bell schedule as what Mrs. Williams just expressed. Drop-off pickup doesn't change in my building, we'll be doing it the same way we have been. But we're excited, have kids back, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
All right, mine's about the same. Lincoln is looking great. Chris has been hard at work getting everything ready. Many teachers, again, have been in the building getting our classrooms ready. And Ms. Carey has been hardworking, getting everything ready for the first day of school. We had the new stair tread replaced. It became very hazardous in the building, so we got some, so hopefully we won't have anyone due to that, at least. We currently have 85 students enrolled. We have four new students, two 4th grade, two 5th grade. So, we're growing our classrooms. The principal leadership training that we went to, it was pretty phenomenal. We really enjoyed collaborating with other leaders around the state. Definitely rejuvenating and inspiring to, to hear, you know, to hear, to learn, all of those sayings and just to collaborate and get, you know, it was, it was great. I look forward to implementing a lot of the things that we did during that training. We talked about climate and culture, PLCs, the importance of self-care for teachers and staff. And as I said, we will meet two more times throughout the school year. Professional development for our new staff and support staff will be August 8th, and all staff will return on Monday, August 11th. So, we look forward to that, seeing all the faces and conversations about what happened through the summer, with the students returning on August 14th. So, although it has flown by, we are excited to have this, the building full again, so that's Lincoln.
Okay, the middle school. When I wrote up the report, I had 107 students who had been enrolled. When I checked it before I came up here, there's like 129. So, the middle school, they're doing a great job of getting enrolled. We still have a few left. I wanted to announce, and I'll probably be getting some phone calls. We are super excited that we're gonna be able to offer advanced math for 7th and for 8th grade students. And so, over this next week, I'll be reaching out to those students to let them know that they're eligible, kinda the steps that we're gonna take and, you know, what that will really look at. To be eligible for this, it's not like, I, you know, a mama can't call and be like, "Hey, I want my kid to be in advanced math." We look at their state test scores, we look at their math scores, teacher referral, and the grade that they had in their math class. So, we're excited about that, and I'll be contacting parents soon. Like Ms. Webster said, there were, I think there was like 22 other principals that went to this training that we had. One of the things that I was gonna talk about, you know, I've struggled to try to figure out a time to implement PLCs in the, in the middle school just because I have, you know, I have coaches, I have people switching buildings. There's a lot of movement. And I'm super excited that, you know, this year we are going to implement Encore, which is, you know, about 25 minutes each day. Well, during that time, we're gonna have our PLCs. So, there's gonna be a lot of rotating, and the kids are gonna, you know, be kind of exposed to some different things. During that time, we are also going to have them work on iXL, which is an online program that we are adopting district-wide. We're pretty excited about, and it's gonna be just kind of like a remediation for some of those kids. But with them moving around, we're able to pull some of the teachers out each day, and so weekly, we'll be able to have PLC meetings. So, we're super excited about that. Changes in our school, like Madison said, ours is a little bit different. I didn't add it on my sheet, so I apologize for that. Our first bell will ring at 8 o'clock, at 8:05 is our late bell. And one of the big changes that we're, that we're implementing at the middle school is we are not, we're not allowing outside food and drink. This has become quite an issue at the middle school. If you are wanting to provide your kid with McDonald's or Sonic or Subway, they can actually be checked out and go out and eat, eat that with you. But bringing it into the school, we've had issues with, you know, food being, honestly, taken off other people's plates. And, you know, we've had just some issues. So, we're gonna crack down on that, and if you wanna take your kid out for lunch, that's great, but we're not gonna bring that outside food into the building. And no deliveries by Pizza Hut or anything like that. We usually run into some time issues with that, so. Do what? You're welcome. I know.
Okay, well, moving on to the athletic report. Is that next? Okay. Mr. Beeler is at Coach's Clinic this evening, and so he is not with us, so I am reporting for him. Summer Pride concludes this week, and as I said, the Coach's Clinic is taking place this week. Coaches will be in and out all week, different, coaches are going on different days for different sessions, so that's, that's pretty great. Lakin Gaddy was recognized, or will be recognized, as the girls' All-State game July 29th, 6 p.m. And I saw on Facebook, I mean, we don't have it on, on here, I didn't type that up, but she was recognized as the Coach's Female Player of the Year, Athlete of the Year. So, that was, that is a huge honor, and we're, we're very excited for her. Lance Mathers will be playing in the football All-State game on Thursday, the 31st, at 7 p.m. at Oklahoma Baptist. Lakin's game is at Tulsa Memorial High School. Media Days are coming up. Media Day was today for softball and cross-country, so that was very, it's a great way to, to get started, taking pictures and, and that kinda thing of the, the teams. We do have the big community blitz and football media day, or I should say fall sport media day, that is taking place on August 16th. That is a Saturday morning. There's a fundraiser for cross-country that will take place at 8 o'clock in the morning. They're having a 5K. Football scrimmage will take place at 9:30, and they will also have a tent set up to purchase yard signs. Cheer will be selling spirit buttons at that time, and the band will have a bake sale. So, we'll also have a little bit of food there, and I'm sure it will be absolutely delicious. Radio station will be there broadcasting the scrimmage as well as interviewing the seniors, so that's gonna be a lot of fun. Team camp for softball is in Enid the first week of August. It begins August 5th. The team will start their games. They have so many games in the month of August, it's, it's kinda crazy. So, their home opener is scheduled for Monday, August 11th. On the 12th, they will go to Chisholm and play there. And then the next three weeks, they will have a few games here and there, but they also have tournaments three, three weeks in a row. So, they have a lot of softball going on during the month of August. AMS softball also kicks off, and their first game, their home opener, will be against Fairview on August 11th. And they have several games during the month of August, so check the calendar and the schedule to make sure you know when those are. Football, football practice will begin on August 11th. The first game is August 29th at Fairview. And our home opener is Friday, September 5th against Perry. So, we're very excited about that. Middle school football starts against Fairview on August 28th. So, I see that grin over there, I wanna hear about it. Moving on to the principals' report. We have actually done really well with enrollment. I'm pretty excited about our numbers. We are anticipating 280 students at this point, just with what we had on hand, and students who would be returning to us as well as new students we know that are coming to us. As of this morning, it was, 144 had already been processed. They've been fully submitted, and there were 21 that were still in process where parents had missed a checkmark or they needed another form or something like that that they needed to fill out. Before I came in, I noticed that we had a total files submitted of 178. So, we're doing great. I'm super excited about how people have put those in there, so. High school's been a busy place. We had the all-school reunion in the middle of the month in July, and so our custodial staff, as well as a number of other people, have been working so hard to make sure that the building is ready. John Holt and Ethan Lyons, our custodians, have worked tirelessly to get the floors all shined up and waxed and, and everything just absolutely spit-polished, and it is, they look great. Coaches worked hard on the athletic center, make sure it was ready. The Ag guys came out, did some dirt work for us, moved some things, cleaned up a bunch of things and hauled off a bunch of, just stuff that needed to go away. And so, the, I really, I, I think the campus looks better than it has in forever. I mean, I don't, I can't tell you when it's looked this good. So, I'm very excited about how hard people have worked. The reunion was a huge success. We had people in through the building, supposed to be from 1 to 3. We had people in till almost 4 o'clock. I mean, the, the place was full. Mr. Bashir's, Mr. Beeler, Mr. Wilson and I were all here to talk with people and show people around. Oh, my goodness. We couldn't do organized tours because there were so many people, which was a really great problem to have. So, appreciate all of the help and all of the work that's been done. We have four new teachers this year. We've already, obviously, talked to you all about them, but I just kinda wanna recap. We have Morgan Cook, who will be teaching math and, and coaching some baseball and other things for us. Vicky Chesser is someone who we will be sharing at the middle school and the high school, teaching math. So, we're very excited to have her coming to us. Ross Stone is teaching Alt-Ed as well as our basketball coach. And then Derek Thomas is going to be teaching science for us as well as coaching baseball and football. So, that's gonna be great. Kinda touched on some of this with the sports report, but we do have Meet the Teacher Night on August 12th as well as freshman orientation. So, I wanna make sure our freshmen know about that, then come and tour the building and spend some time and get used to the place so they're not kind of in a panic. Our first practice, first rehearsal for Miss Alva is August 14th, and that pageant will take place on August 23rd at 7 o'clock. So, excited to, to see what happens there. Now, I need you to scroll up so you can show the pictures. This is my, I'm, I'm just so excited to be able to show pictures of the gold bug. What you have on the left is the before picture. The picture on the right is after. And Rodney Welch with Alva Monument came up with Buddy Sands, and they painted it the week of the reunion or before the reunion. And, oh my gosh, the pictures don't do it justice. It is absolutely gorgeous, and I cannot thank those men enough for their hard work and, and their talents. You know, Rodney used essentially a can of spray paint. I mean, you know, shake it up and just spray this, and how, I don't know. It is absolutely gorgeous, so I'm very excited about that, and I'm, I'm delighted to be able to show that off. Can't wait for Meet the Teacher Night so people can see it in person.
Before we move into your report, Mr. Bashir's, thank you for your enthusiasm. Always worry a little bit as a fellow educator when teachers are just a little bit excited, nervous before the first day of school, so I appreciate your enthusiasm. Thank you for what you do, and we couldn't do it without you. So, round of applause, we all get started, so thank you. All right, Mr. Bashir's, your turn.
Well, just trying to sort things out, facilities, start here. When I did the tours, this was set all on that. She wanted the high school to be open. And then kinda did a driving tour at several places, the other four sites. I think we went out to the new arena and the airport and highlighted the swimming pool, some of the things. So, we did bus tours, had a script written, and took about 45 minutes, the tour, they'd drive around. Made me think of the Riverboat at Disney World. Jungle cruise through Alva.
That's okay.
That's, that's. So, while they were doing that, Mr. Beeler, Dr. Nicehawar and I had stationed around. I was in head librarian, sat in business with several people for probably an hour, just like fireside chat, couches, you know. Coach Wilson was out in the indoor. Mr. Brown was in the auditorium with the speech and debate reunion. So, just a lot of people, a lot of positive energy around the high school. And I attribute that, I'm gonna give a little shout-out to the high school staff. I know all the other buildings did all the things, too. But John and Ethan worked their tails off. It seemed like every time I came up to high school, checked on things, I knew this was gonna be the hub of that day. Came up one day and Coach Wilson's out painting in the, in the indoor, fixing up something, you know, dressed and cleaning up the hallway. Another day, Mr. Blocker is, I can't, skid steer, moving stuff around and cleaning up behind the Ag building, and Adam had, we need your taking care of around the greenhouse and all that stuff. Dr. Nicehawar spent two weeks on her hands and knees scrubbing that, that bugged the floors of paint. Also came up, saw her pulling weeds behind the building. And then she had a broom and a water hose cleaning mud off the front entrance downstairs, so.
I also had Mr. Lloyd with a spade and a bucket, all in dirt.
So, these, the high school staff really went above and beyond. So, give them. Saying that, all our janitors did a really good job across the district. Couple principals alluded to, a lot of paintings done, all the floors are waxed. Buildings are looking good right now. I think it was, I think it was a good decision to overhire an outside company to do all the mowing and what have you. The grounds outside, there's some painting projects we need to do, and there's some cleaning of the brick and some of those big projects that are gonna take contractors, the things we can control, right? Place is looking good. Really is looking, looking charming, so.
Thank you.
I think we made some good decisions that way. Ms. Martini had, I guess, was Joey Milton, removed the shrubs in front of the middle school. They just, they were, they'd gotten big and cold and trash, and wasps was a big problem. So, we had those removed last week. He is still going to trim some of the trees back behind, and probably remove two or maybe three of them that are just diseased and, and old and starting to die. Some of my limbs fall out, and we're trying to open that up a little bit, maybe get a practice field painted out there again where the middle school could stay there for football practice instead of losing this 30 minutes driving back and forth. Figure his dress and practice there, it's gonna buy him more practice time, so. Best things are working on there. Interior goes near, nearly complete. Then we removed, removed the tree on the right field fence, removed the softball field and built, parent volunteers, one of our coaches built a new batting cage for the girls on the softball field. So, as long as cool things happen there. Transportation-wise, fleet's in pretty good shape. We're finishing up a couple repairs, talked to Steve, dare to go. We take a couple buses over to National and Tulsa, and just finished out some AC repairs, everything, give service and that kinda thing. So, kinda last push before school starts.
And we get them back in time to give them service?
Should. Or if we, if we don't, we'll take them over one at a time so we're not short.
I don't know how backed up they get as well, so.
Well, I think that's been the trick, is just get it scheduled.
Got it.
We get it scheduled, have it over there on time, they'll do it and get them back.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's my report.
4.3, resignations, retirements, resignments.
Said two resignations, both parent professionals from last year. Shaya Vasquez, she got her nursing degree, nursing license, and she's going to be a nurse. Thing she trained for. And then Micah Maloney was another parent professional. She's kinda wrestling with whether she was coming back or not for a while, so. Might have pulled the trigger there, so. Shaya Vasquez and Micah Maloney are two pairs that resigned. Shaya Vasquez and Micah Maloney are two pairs that resigned.
Anything to vote on that section, correct? Five, items of current business, 5.1, discussion of possible board action to vote to approve offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicants number one and two certified teachers at the 2025-26 school year. You want to address these individually, and then we can vote all together? Is that okay? All right, we will start with 5.1, Mr. Bashir.
First was Derrick Thomas. We hired him last month for our baseball coach. We were waiting on the State Department to get us his teacher number, before we could officially hire him as a teacher. So, we had a board meeting, was that on Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Thursday morning, we had his teacher number. You know, State Department.
That's okay, we got it.
So, we got his number, we need to get him hired as our science teacher at the high school. And then Nicole Kern. Ms. Potter would like to hire her for a special ed teacher. We had a Title I position open at Lincoln. Ms. Gilchrist, who was one of our sped teachers, wanted, requested to move to Title I at Lincoln. And Hattie had a teacher on the, kind of ace up her sleeve, I guess, to fill that special ed position, so. You know, it all kind of fell into place.
Smart girl.
So, anyway, that's the two, two teachers, Derrick Thomas and Nicole Kern.
Wonderful. Move on to 5.2, before we take a vote. You want to take a vote now? We will take a vote. I've been corrected. I would entertain a motion to hire Derrick Thomas and Nicole Kern.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.2, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract for applicants one through two. Emergency certifications, all pending state board approval for the 2025-26 school year.
First on emergency certification is John Low. Middle school, language arts. And then the second one is Alexis Gatsford, the teacher at Washington. So, they'll both be on emergency certifications while they're working on getting their formal certification and all that.
Is that who this is?
Yes, I brought this to you.
Is that who this is?
Hello, Mr. Low. Being nervous there for a minute, I'm like, oh, my gosh, I didn't get him on the agenda, and I made him come to the meeting. So, I was getting a little bit nervous. John is joining us. He received his Master's of Fine Arts Writing from Lindenwood College. He has a degree in English that he reserve, or that he got from Missouri Southern. He taught English for a year at the college. He actually went to Northwestern for a year, played football up here. And he's kind of floated around, done a lot of different things. And I think he's ready to kind of settle down and try teaching at the middle school. We're excited to have him here.
You might need those pads and helmet.
Give that away for football. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the offer of employment to John and Alexis.
So moved.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you for sitting and waiting with us. You're welcome to stay, or you may go, whichever you would prefer. Welcome to the family.
Everyone, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.3, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to applicants one through three non-certified positions for the 25-26 school year.
First, I have Samantha Holly. She was a paraprofessional for us last year, right? And she, she applied for a custodian position at Washington.
Okay.
So, Ms. Williams hired her, offered that to her. And Teresa Kennedy and, how do I say it? Kelsey.
Montsevias.
Montsevias. So, she told me how to say it before the meeting. Teresa Kennedy and Kelsey Montsevias, four paraprofessionals. So, I recommend hiring those three.
Will you entertain that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following teachers as adjunct instructors for the 25-26 school year.
I feel like I need, I want to explain kind of difference between adjunct and emergency. 10 years ago, pre-COVID, possibly. An adjunct teacher, adjuncting was something we used for, if I had a teacher that was maybe math certified, but we needed to teach history, I could adjunct them in that one subject, right? That's where adjuncting started. Teacher shortages, all the things, have changed a little bit. Emergency certifications were for those people that, they have a college degree, right? They want to be certified, they want to teach, but they're going to take a class or two to get alternative certified, that kind of stuff. Then we can emergency certify them for up to three years, while they're working towards that certification. So, they were two distinctly separate things. Through COVID, they took a bunch of requirements off the adjuncting, where they're almost the same now, okay? So, we're still trying to use it the way it was originally intended, okay? So, the two people we have on here right now, Derrick Thomas and Julian Anderson. Derrick's certification, I think he's a PE. He just started this alternative certification, there's another one, right? That's for those people that didn't go through the traditional path. What I went through, had student teach and did the full failure and all the things. So, alternative certification, somebody that's got the degree, has passed the test, and are just finishing up some of those other requirements. So, Derrick got alternative certified, okay, and PE. And we need to adjunct him while he's, he's going to go back and take the science test, isn't next. So, he's got, he's got a background in it, and have every ounce of faith that he'll pass it. So, we need to adjunct him in science. And then Julian Anderson has several history certifications. Again, back in the day with umbrella certifications, psychology and sociology fell under those history certifications. But they don't anymore. So, she has all these history certifications, but we need to adjunct her in psych and sociology, so she can teach those classes.
And she'll be totally at the high school this year, is that correct? So, that'll be a good use of the class options.
So, anyway, that's the two, Derrick in science, and Julian in psych, I suppose.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept those two.
So moved.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
5.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve credits for Royal Quest Technology Center for students attending career tech classes and earning credits in mathematics and/or science for the 2025-26 school year.
We see to approve this, so we can give the math and science credits that the students get at the tech center, if they apply in any other programs.
There's no difference in all that we've done.
It's the same thing we've done.
Same thing we've always done.
It just allows our students to.
Transcript that.
To be able to transcript those math and science credits and still be part of those programs.
Will you entertain a motion for 5.5?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
5.6, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following child nutrition meal prices for the 2025-26 school year.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about school lunches before we jump into the pricing. I don't think there's an administration state that doesn't want to pay for school lunches. Let me start off with that. So, we all want to, we need to keep our schools solvent, right? We need to be able to pay the bills. We want to put as much of that, of our resources into student learning and classrooms, as we can, okay? Such as purchasing new computers to run the software and all the things that make classrooms in the 21st century work. So, if that means it, there's a couple of ways through federal funds, programs, whatever, that you can fund free, free student lunches or meals. First way is the Community Eligibility Program. Reference that to CEP, can you hear that, places? And the other one is, it's a provision two. There's actually provisions one, two, and three. One and three don't benefit anybody that is kind of old, outdated. Provision two is what, what schools use it if they qualify, okay? Provision two is a program through the USDA. CEP's through, I can't remember, CEP's through, it has to do with DHS and some of that. And then provision two's the USDA. So, CEP, the Community Eligibility Program, is based on what they call direct certification from DHS. That's going to be SNAP, the EBT cards, those things. So, direct certification through DHS is who is the number they look at to see if your school qualifies for a free lunch program on CEP, okay? Right now, we are about 33% free lunches, based on direct certification, okay? To be beneficial to our child nutrition program, for all of our students, this number needs to be like 75 or 80%. I talked to a gal at the State Department today about these programs. If I said, what's the percent? She goes, 80. 75, 80%.
To qualify for CEP. That we hear other schools that are being able to provide free lunch, they qualify. They've got that 80%.
The headline we all saw out of Enid News.
Yes, sir.
That Enid is paying for the 80%. The 80% direct cert, so they're on the CEP program. That is, you start that in April, that's when you apply for that. So, they started working on that a year ago. It'd be here September, is what Sam Robinson told me. They applied in April, state came out, did the audit, did all the things, qualified them. So, now they're on CEP program, because they're 80% direct certified at Enid. So, that's the CEP program. Provision two is based on our free and reduced percentage. It's a little bit looser, right? It's on the actual applications we take, and not just direct certification. I think direct cert probably is in there, but it also includes the free and reduced lunch paperwork. Again, in my conversation with the State Department, they don't recommend applying for provision two until you're about 70%, 65 or 70%. So, 65's iffy. You can qualify for provision two, a lot less. Some schools have qualified and lost money, right? So, the magic line at the State Department's at 65 or 70%, okay? For provision two.
Okay.
CEP's 80, provision two's 70. So, it's a little bit looser, that's where that's at. And right now, in Alva, we're, we're just right at 50%. We, I could go through, I think Washington's at 54%. Longfellow's like 53 or 4. Lincoln's about 51. Middle School's 47, the high school's 40. Okay, if I remember those numbers right. So, we're just 50% district-wide. For either of these programs to benefit us, we're going to have to be at least 65% or more, right? Of free and reduced. It is so, so, so important that we get our families to fill out the free and reduced lunch application, whether they qualify or not. How many families out there that say, I'll never qualify, and get surprised? Even if it's reduced, I mean, it'll be free if it's reduced, right? We need, I've told them, telling everybody, we need to have a hard push. We need as much community involvement or participation in our free and reduced lunch programs as possible. Whether you think you qualify or not, fill it out, turn it in, okay? It's going to help us in all these other areas. And those free and reduced applications help us in so many other ways. When they look at your E-rate, that's another federal thing. They're going to look at how many kids have accessed the internet, that kind of stuff. There's a lot, that number helps us in a lot of other areas than just child nutrition. And so, it's just so important we get that, that filled out. Grass tax, if we funded free meals for all students, it would cost the district around $100,000. Carrie and I worked that up today, looked at, what, five, five different scenarios, Carrie, at least? And any way we cut it, it's going to be $100,000 for us to, to. Now, we are working with State Department and attorneys to try and develop a program that would provide a reduced price, if not a free meal for all students. But we want to do that in a way that's sustainable, not just for a year or two. If you do it for a year or two, the way, I mean, it's just like at home. If you're taking money out of your savings account, when the savings account's gone, there's no money to take. Right? And that's what would happen here. We need to protect that. Plus, there's other, there's other things coming. There's plans we need to use that money for that's in the classroom to directly involve student learning. So, working with, talked to an attorney today, talked to the State Department two or three times, got the conversation going. How can we, is there a program that we can develop in Alva that would be sustainable? If not free, but a reduced lunch price? Almost like a self-substitute kind of thing. So, that's some things we're working on in the very near future, okay? You know, every dollar we spend, now the general fund is a dollar a minute. It could be spent somewhere else. The main thing we want to do, when we talk about quality of education, Alva, and those kind of things, we want to make sure that we're spending money in the classrooms for student learning and for our teachers as much as possible. We want to direct as much money into the classroom as we can. When, here's the other trick to this whole thing. When the free and reduced lunch, free and reduced lunch form is available from the State Department. It's not even available yet, through this year. When it's available, we'll push it out, and we're going to have a whole social media campaign to try and get this, this term back in. That's where we're working hard right now to develop this other program, so. Okay, are there any questions about all the, all the ways to pay for a student lunch? There was, there was conversation with the legislature this year about paying for student lunches. It didn't make it through the legislative process. There's too much push for doing away with the college income tax and flat budget, that kind of thing. I'll go on a limb and say, I bet there's a push this year, right? I think, I think it's even in some of their meetings right now.
So, the forms aren't even available yet?
No.
So, let's shoot forward and say, next year, maybe it is?
The form.
Can that be a?
Should we start working on it?
I don't know. Well. We have all the forms online, if I remember right, for this enrollment. Can that not be a mandatory, complete form? You have to fill it out?
You can't, you can't. We tried to do that last year, you can't make it.
You can't require, you can't require people, that's a condition of enrollment, to fill out the free and reduced lunch form. Just that the programs are working.
We would have had it in our enrollment forms already this year, but the State Department, we just, every year, try to get it in there, but the State Department just does not have it ready.
How late is it normally? I mean, if school starts August 14, 13.
This is the latest it's been. I've looked back.
Well, there's a lot of stuff going on in Oklahoma City right now.
It was released on July 1st, and Psylogis still doesn't have it working.
It should be any day. I think the last email.
Fingers crossed by the end of the month.
Yeah. There are hopefully 25th. One email, and then we went.
The end of August.
Yes.
You've already moved on, I know. I can tell by that look.
End of this month, the end of July.
Wouldn't that be nice? No, there's no way, end of July.
With all that said, the State Department has a tool, whatever. I know I talked to Becky today, said the same thing. State Department suggests we, we raise our lunch rates about 90 cents.
How much?
90.
90 cents.
Almost a dollar. So, what, what they recommend we charge versus what we were charging last year would be a 90 cent increase, okay? They're going, well, if you don't do that, you'd do at least 10 cents, right? So, we're kind of like, well, thanks for narrowing that down. So, as we were doing the RFP with, I don't know Keystone, that's on there later. Was doing that, looking at what the charge, the price of lunches and breakfast, it could be all the things. Again, some of those carryover things, we did a little bit in child nutrition to buy new ovens, to pay staff between July, because we still have three cafeteria workers on our payroll. All the things, right? So, to, to do about what we've been doing, okay? It'd be a, it'd be a 10 cent increase on student breakfast and a 25 cent increase on student lunches. And that just keeps us pretty flat. That just raises our prices equitable to what the cost increase was, okay? So, anyway, that, when it's all said and done, I'd recommend to set the lunch prices on the chart behind me. I put breakfast for all students at $2.25, elementary at $3., middle school at $3.10, and high school at $3.25. Adult breakfast at $2.50, and adult lunch at $2.525. We did try to round it to the nearest five.
Right.
We have contract breakfast and lunch on there. That's for outside organizations that make contract from us to provide their lunch and breakfast. Contract breakfast at $3., and lunch at $5.50, and then for adults, $3.50 and $6.50. That was just a 50 cent increase on what our contract price was last year, so. I would recommend to set prices here. I would recommend to set prices here and just know that we are working to try and develop a kind of program that's sustainable where we can at least not have to increase in the future or whatever we do, subsidize that.
I would like to thank Carrie and Mr. Shiers, that's, it's overwhelming. There's a lot of information, there's a lot of things that play into forms that has to be approved by the state or federal, so thank you for your hard work. I know it's crazy, but it is appreciated. Entertain any questions that you might have? Would anyone want any further explanation or help us understand? Do you think you got it? They're just, okay, thank you, thank you for that. I would entertain a motion to accept this charge for meal prices for 25, 26.
I move to accept the meal prices as presented.
Second.
Singleton.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Moving on. Five point seven, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Alba School District handbooks for the 25-26 school year.
I would open third, yeah. Pretty long, yes, they are. They've talked about a lot of changes in them. A lot of them was the digital stuff, drive policy attendance, policy attendance is a real big one. Principals, elementary principal want to talk about anything in the handbook?
We all changed those arrival times to bill schedule, that was a change. We put, added a big push about attendance and how important it is to attend school.
We have a table of contents.
This is why, sir, we're hard to give us a table of contents, we're very excited about that.
We tried, I mean, to make it easier to read because it is massive. It's all very important.
Cleaned it up, took out duplications. It kind of was redundant, so hopefully it reads better.
Ms. Martini?
I kind of talked about the lunch one that we changed. Another one that Dr. Nyswanger and I definitely agreed on is we have a lot of students who choose to wear pajama pants and they want to wear slippers to school. We're not allowing that this year.
No. So it's. We are taking the position that we are helping train our future career, yeah, career-ready. And career-ready also means a level of professionalism which does include not wearing pajama pants and wearing safe shoes. And slippers are not exactly safe shoes. Slippers aren't slides, there's a difference. So when if someone asks, there's a difference there. We are going to be a little more diligent about enforcing length of shorts. They are to be to your fingertips. It has not changed since the beginning of time, since shorts were invented, that they are to be to your fingertip. And so at the end of the year, I actually had the student body in the auditorium stand, put your hand down at your side. If your shorts are shorter than your fingertips, don't wear them next year. And so prepared them a little bit for when they go dress shopping or I guess clothes shopping. And it's a girl and boy thing, you know? Some say that dress codes are directed more at girls. Not anymore, the shorts are back to basically 80's length. And so boys are wearing shorter shorts as well. So be aware that your shorts do need to go down to your fingertips. No blankets, that was something we put in there last year and I think we got a handle on that. And if you do wear anything like spandex or whatever, your shirt or tunic or whatever you wear over, it needs to be down past your bottom. That was, that's probably a big one. We talked about the cell phone policy in that student body meeting. That didn't get the groans that pajama pants got. So that, I know that's going to be a good one to try to make a change. What was, is there another one? Oh, I already mentioned semester tests. That's another big one for us. Again, we have to prepare students for post-high school and, you know, we think of graduation plus. Whatever your career path, whether it be an electrician, a welder, a college professor, you are going to have to take tests to be able to work in that role. And so there are certifications in just about every walk of life and every workforce. So we need to prepare students for them. And I know that's going to be a difficult one for some students to swallow, but I think it's an important one. Anything else?
That's all I can think of.
I think those were the major ones, yes.
So with all that being said, I'd recommend.
The handbooks will be available online.
Yes.
As they always are.
Their food and kind of policy will put them on.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, your collaboration and working together and the alignment from elementary up, but I appreciate that. I know you guys, you all were intentional with that. I think that helps the students.
It does, and it makes everyone's life easier to know if they have been to the middle school. When they come to the high school, they're going to see very similar expectations. You know, we're all here for the right reasons and the same reasons. And while Mrs. Martini talked about having a closed campus and not allowing outside food, we have an open campus. So obviously, students can bring outside food and drinks or have outside food and drinks at lunch. But just like last year, all of that, all of their food needs to be consumed prior to class. And now we're going to need our drinks to be consumed prior to going to class as well. When you look at keeping a building clean, coffee drinks, a lot of the teas leave dyes in our wax. And so then our building looks kind of tacky and we don't want that. We want to make sure that we are also having healthy nutritious things put in our bodies. Kids can still have water, I assume. They can at our level as well, we want you to be hydrated. A hydrated brain is a thinking brain. And so that will be good, but that will be probably a hard one as well.
Would you entertain a motion to accept the handbooks as presented?
Move to approve the handbooks as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Five point eight, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve an out-of-state travel request by Alba High School Ag Ed instructors to travel to McPherson, Kansas for an FFA officer retreat on August 8th, 2025.
I would recommend to approve our out-of-state travel request.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Five point nine has eight different items underneath that. Five point nine, we'll start with one at a time and vote, is that okay? Or you want to do them all at once?
Either way, we can do them all at once.
Let's do them all at once. Okay, so we'll start at five point nine one, Ms. Shiers, and I'll allow you to accept all of them. And then when we get to the end, we'll take one big vote. Thank you.
If you guys have any questions along the way, stop. Alba Golf and Crunch Club, the first contract. It's a contract for golf teams to use the golf course. They present us with a new contract this year. Terms of the contract is for a full calendar year, gives access to golf course during kind of specified times. It may just, we can't use the course on men's and women's league nights and afternoon on Saturday and Sunday, which makes sense. That'd be the big membership nights, right? That's $545 a player. So take that times 30 players, about 16,000 dollars. Use the course, so.
Did you say something about if their parents are members?
If their parents are already members, we don't have to pay for the kid.
Okay.
Let's say that.
Thank you. Five point ninety-two, Big Five Community, if you're ready to move on.
Big Five, yeah. Big Five Community Services, that's our head start, we have a museum. We serve as the LEA, the local education group that oversees that. So we serve as the LEA, that's the service agreement to allow that to happen. Five point nine point three, Circle H Cleaning. Same agreement we had at Circle H last year to help cleaning here at the high school and the indoor and at Lincoln. Toy with the idea of hiring a second custodian at Lincoln, I think it's needed. What do you get when hired at the middle school to replace that one? I've been looking for a while, if we have another good candidate, I may recommend to hire another one at Lincoln. And if we do that, then I've talked to Clint about.
Concentrating.
We're concentrating on the indoor, ag building, art building, basketball locker rooms, gymnasium, okay? Where they can be a little more focused and not just spread out. So not doing away with them, it may shift gears a little bit with them. But it's all depending on who we can get hired. Five point four is the School Resource Officer Contract, the city of Alba. Same contract as the last year, provides two officers from the police department to serve as SROs. Some kind of neat, we have the ability this year to provide office space for them, the middle school and the high school, which would, should allow them to be physically in the buildings. Previously, they didn't have a place, so if there was any reports they had to do, all the things they have to go back down to the station to do all that. So we have the ability to provide office space, we found that in both buildings. Going to get a sign that says, "Alba Police Department, School Resource Officer", where everybody knows that's where the SRO is, that's the office. Want that to be a safe place for our students, place they can go, you know, all the things. Use them more as a resource officer. So same contract as last year, just some kind of neat things going on there. Keystone Food Service, this was the five-year renewal of the RFP for food service management. So instead of the addendum to extend the contract like we normally do, this is a reapproval of the RFP, okay? We put that out to bid, had two RFPs return, Keystone and Opa. The two that came back, kind of let Carrie head this, headed out. Honestly, the tradition started and Carrie took the baton from her. Had a committee meeting, when RFPs came in, they were due. Had a committee meeting, opened RFPs, did the grading, pay for all the things. Keystone came out, I was on top of that, so that's on there. Student lunches are cost $4.68 and adult lunches cost $4.97. That's where some of those prices came in. So Department of Career Tech, Department of Career Technology, Career Tech. This is the contract with the state Career Tech to offer, not Northwest Tech, but still our state. To offer Ag Ed, FACS, Family Consumer Science, a new one, Business Marketing and Information Technology, B-Mite program, and then our STEM. Previously, we had Ag, FACS, and STEM. STEM went to a half-day, but we added a full-day B-Mite. So we've actually added a half-a-day program total of what we had. Doing all that, it did, it created a surrogative force as far as we got program assistance and 412 money. Sorry, and 412 money from Career Tech for B-Mite. It cuts STEM in half and we gained B-Mite, B-Mite actually pays a little more. But didn't change any of our course offerings for our students. Our students have the same opportunities, same course offerings. We've just added a BPA chapter that we hadn't had before. And Chris, I talked to him, he was excited about collaborating some with the tech center and doing some joint projects that way. I mean, basically, we get first year. That's contract with Career Tech. Nine point seven, Department of Rehabilitation Services. That allows us to offer school-to-work services through the Department of locational rehabilitation. And the last one is the Stepping Stones Group. That contract is, provides a school psychologist evaluation for our students. The contract with them, if we have a student needs evaluation call, they do things. I would recommend approving those.
Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept five point nine point one through five point nine point eight.
So moved.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Item six, any new business, sir?
No new business.
Item seven, it's signed the documents approved by earlier action, we will do. Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjournment.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.